Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to Commissioner's Court. And if I can get this modulated a little bit, maybe that's better. Again, welcome to Commissioner's Court. Before we get started, we have Brother Cody Craig with us to lead us in our invocation. And Commissioner McCam, the pledges, please.
Would you pray with me? Father God, we love you, we praise you, and we thank you for an opportunity you've given us together here in this place to handle the business of the community we love. Father, we're thankful for elected officials and all those that serve in our local government. God, give them wisdom and strength as they make decisions, God, that aren't always popular, and they're not easy. Father, we're thankful for where we live, and we're thankful that we have a bright future ahead because we lean on you for all our understanding and the decisions that we make. God, you are good. Thank you for this time. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Brother Craig, thank you. I'll remind everyone to please make sure that your phones are silenced. All right. Well, the time is 9:01. We do have a quorum present, so we will call this meeting to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of the Commissioner's Court held on September 10th, 2024. Any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing now Judge, I'm with we approve the minutes from Commissioner's Court, regular session, September 10th, 2024, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tootley and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the minutes of Commissioner's Court held on September 10th, 2024, as presented. All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Item number two is consider and take action on a proclamation declaring Henderson County a Purple Heart County. And court, you'll see in the backup a resolution that we have here today, but I want to point out, we have Mr. Ben Pate with us in the audience who kind of championed this and brought this forward to us several months ago as a way to bring recognition to those who have been awarded and given so much for this award. Mr. Pate, would you like to speak some to the court concerning this? Please come forward.
I wanted to first recognize Caring for America Vice President Jennifer Browning that's here today, Elvis Allen, who is a Purple Heart recipient, the Honorable Judge Wade McKinney into the Commissioner's Court. Caring for America of Henderson County was created for the purpose to support first responders and veterans. Caring for America offers scholarships for the Henderson County High School seniors that desire careers in law enforcement, fire services, and medical support. In the past, Caring for America has also offered financial support to crimes against children, task force with the help help in travel, meals, hotel, and class expenses. This was from a request from District Attorney Jenny Palmer. District Attorney Jenny Palmer and Sheriff Bodie Hillhouse meet annually with the Scholarship Committee to discuss opportunities in Henderson County where Caring for America can help. The Caring for America Scholarship Committee has awarded 11 scholarships to date. Three are currently attending Trinity Valley Community College. Caring for America schedules a golf tournament and Athens Country Club each spring to raise funds for the program. Caring for America commitment to veterans involves a Veterans Day event held at the Texan. All veterans and their spouse are invited to a free dinner and a presentation order to honor them for their service. In addition to dinner, with the support of local businesses and individuals, we are able to present gifts and prizes to the veterans. Our keynote speaker this year is still on active duty, so are many others that will be attending. Today, Caring for America of Henderson County is grateful for the action Judge McKinney and the Commissioner's Court is offering today. In order to advance the recognition for the wounded veterans of Henderson County, I believe this action to some could be considered insignificant, but to the wounded veteran, it is of great significance. First responders, veterans, just words and titles, but where would we be as citizens of this great country without these individuals that have made and are making our world, more importantly, our county, a safer place to live? Without the sacrifices of these individuals, past and present, this country, and particularly this county, would be a sad, dangerous place indeed. We could never thank them enough for putting their life on the line and some giving their life during the service to us. God bless our first responders and veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pate. Court, this program has been around for a while, and what it does is it puts us in a position to where we can actually have this official designation. And by passing this proclamation here today, that starts the process. We are hoping through discussions with Mr. Pate and those individuals with Caring for America that we hopefully will be able to unveil the actual signs and things come this Memorial Day, correct?
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day, Veterans Day, excuse me. So that's kind of what we're starting in process here. Had some discussions with text dot verbal discussions about possibly having these signs placed upon entrance to the county along text dot right of ways. Nothing official as of yet, but at least got a shake of the head. And of course, any of the additional locations that might be under ours that the court might wish to participate in. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I've seen those signs up along the interstate and stuff when you enter the county's Purple Heart. There's, I've seen a lot of them before.
Yes, sir. Any further questions? Well, again, the court wishes to thank all those involved in this. We appreciate your efforts and for continuing to carry this torch forward and keeping that recognition of the individuals who have given so much for us. Thank you. So with that, court, we'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the proclamation for the Purple Heart County for Henderson County.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCam, to proclaim Henderson County a Purple Heart County. Is there any further discussion? And I realize that we haven't read the proclamation, so I will do so at this time. Whereas the people of Henderson County, Texas, have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as a badge of military merit by George Washington in 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service ward or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to the members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from Henderson County, Texas, who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and a way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many men and women in uniform from Henderson County have given their lives while serving in the armed forces. And whereas September 17th, 2024, is designated a day in Henderson County, Texas, to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. Now therefore Henderson County Commissioner's Court does hereby proclaim Henderson County, Texas, a Purple Heart County. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Court. Item number three, consider and take action to extend the current contract with VOTEC for election and voter registration software and support services for the Henderson County Elections and Voter Registration Department. Ms. Good morning.
Good morning, Court. I bring today the extended contract for VOTEC. With VOTEC, we've been in contract with them since 2016, and it's just an annual contract for our voter registration system. And the invoice for their services are on our bills today.
Questions, Court?
How long have we been using this system?
Since 2006. We've been, we renewed it, so it's been, I mean, well over 10 years, so.
Is this Springer's signature?
Can be mine or we can authorize as lucky as well, but.
I don't care.
Yes, my signature. This gets us through the presidential election this year. This is the maintenance that ensures our continued operations.
Yeah, and Kenneth Strawn with the county attorney's office has reviewed this and.
And we have made budgetary arrangements to cover all of these. Any further questions? Entertain a motion with judge's authorization.
So, maybe?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner Tootley, to approve, to extend the current contract with VOTEC for election and voter registration software and support services for Henderson County Elections and the Voter Registration Department with the county judge's authorization to sign. Any further comments? All those in favor. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four, consider and take action on a request to spend funds from the vending machine reserve to purchase employee holiday gifts. Ms. Monk?
Yeah, of course, we do this every year for the employees, and we do use profits from our vending machines. So it's, as well, and I'm a tax payer, but just to give our employees a little bit of reward, thank you. So this year, we selected a baseball cap. It'll have the county's logo on it in the leather patch. And we're needing, this, this is going to cost $4,060 plus setup and shipping, so at most, we'd need $4,500. It should be a little less than that if that should just come.
Court, questions?
We have enough in there to cover the complete.
$4,060 in there right now, so.
They got that much because of the folks in three quarters.
Yeah.
They can't afford to.
Inflation. Further comments, questions?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve, approve the request to spend funds from the vending machine reserve to purchase employee holiday gifts as requested. Any further discussion?
I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Andrew for doing this every year. I know my employee really looks forward to their gifts.
I think Diane Rust is most likely to come, so she says thanks.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item five, consider and take action on the fiscal year 2025 regional inter-local agreement with the Andrews Center Behavioral Healthcare System. Court, this is the annual agreement that we enter into to provide mental health support and services or to receive mental health support services from the Andrews Center. Of course, the operations of their facility, the crisis line, the assistance that we gain from them in our jail. This is that foundational agreement. It is at the same cost as of last year, I believe is $88,000, then under these agreements for as long as I can remember. Any questions? I believe this one will require a motion that authorizes all necessary signatures in it. So if there's no further questions, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the fiscal year 2025 regional inter-local agreement with the Andrews Center Behavioral Healthcare System with all necessary signatures authorized. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Item number six is consider and take action on invoice from East Texas Mortuary Service for hold-on body ordered by Justice of the Peace Precinct Four. Court, this item is brought before us because this is one that doesn't fit in our policy as far as involving transport inquests, holds, autopsies, and so forth. So it's a discussion that we have to have here since it does not land in that policy. The audit office is not authorized to pay, so we have it laid before us today. Ms. Monk?
I think the position is a little bit more about this than we do, but you know, y'all have authorized the JP's to transport bodies for autopsy only. So this is just out of the norm. I'm not sure why you chose to do this.
Said there was an investigation, but then we got a bill from the mortuary, so it doesn't actually call in transport for autopsy or autopsy or cremation.
Court, questions?
There were usually five or six whenever they hold them for investigation.
Only for autopsy. We've never had one held for investigation. I'm trying to make sure we know who was doing the investigating. This is very unique.
Well, I've seen one in the bills for an autopsy that was labeled as John Doe. That's not the part of that, is it?
No. And that was true of an autopsy.
I mean, I think we need to pay it if one of our officials requested it, but I think it's something we probably need to look at and see who is responsible for the investigation part of it.
Well, it goes back to.
This could be a pauper, we don't know.
The, the, it goes back to the divided authorities in this. The magistrate does have the authority to put a hold, but the expenditure of the funds lies on the court. And since there has never been a policy set forth on this, there was no guidance, and that's what this is here for. The court wishes to pay this outside of its normal policy. We can amend the policy at some point in time to add this. It's for clarification and getting a bill paid because we do rely on these services when someone is deceased and there's a phone call for somebody to come take the body for autopsy.
Well, like you said, we rely on them, and they, they do it in good faith if we're gonna pay them. And, but we just might need to make sure our policy, either we, either we're gonna pay that from here on out, or we're, well, we're not.
And we will, we will have to bring that back to court to amend our policy if we wish to have that added in there. But it is something that we will have to watch and make future budget considerations to if that becomes the norm, because currently we do not have that issue budgeted for. So. Any further discussion? Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tootley, to approve the invoice from East Texas Mortuary Service for hold-on body ordered by the Justice of the Peace Precinct Four is presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Item number seven, consider and take action on task order with Velvet and Weeks Engineering for topo and site plan for Trinity River slope repair. And at this time, do we have representatives from Velvet and Weeks? I know we have Mr. Strong with us. Mr. Strong, if you wouldn't mind coming, coming forward. This is, this is a task order related to repairs on the Trinity River slope to meet all of our regulatory requirements and so forth. Can you lay this out for the court?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Court. This is an engineering task force from Velvet and Weeks providing site development and planning for slope repair and reconstruction along the Trinity River and Precinct One, which will ensure county compliance with TCEQ remediation efforts.
And this is laid out. It's got all the steps in it. Takes into consideration, we've got the project inspection, topo site, development permitting, Army Corps, everyone involved in that.
Any kind of permitting that we can think of.
Commissioner?
Yeah, this is just the next steps to correct the problem that we ran into last year, and it just needed court approval.
Court, questions?
So is this like behind the dam?
No.
This is kind of on the banks.
It's on private property.
It should be, it's on private property. It should be outside of any flood zone. But we have had Ms. Kimbrough involved as well, making sure that we're not operating in a flood zone. There's some power lines, making sure that we have permits for working under any kind of power lines, any kind of Army Corps of Engineering elevation studies, and any kind of historic commission issues.
And where's the property located?
Um, it used to be the. What's that? Is that Mr. Key?
Yeah, it was Big Heart Key Ranch. New owner now.
And we have reached out to the new owner, and he's given permission for us to work on this remediation.
Is it something that we done?
Um.
It's something that Precinct One did for many, many years, and TCEQ got involved. They were doing it for erosion control, and something that's been going on forever that we just found out last year that it shouldn't be done, so we're trying to get it fixed. You know all their TCEQ rules now with the brush.
There were some issues with the definitions, what is considered hazardous. That can include even like wood, and so we're just trying to remediate that.
Does this come from floodplains or Precinct One?
This is Precinct One. It should be out of the floodplain, just outside.
It's out of the floodplain.
And we want to make sure that we work with the Trinity River Authority as well in case we need any permits being within that area, but we should be just outside of that floodplain area. But we will have Ms. Kimbrough involved as well as far as remediation goes.
Where are these funds being paid out of?
This should come out of the general fund, I believe, not Roden Bridge. So.
That's something to be discussed. I mean, if it's a road and bridge issue, that's what the court's here to discuss. I know that contracts with even Velvet and Weeks, actually on water lines and stuff, anything that is derived out of precincts usually paid for.
Is that Roden Bridge or?
Mm-hmm. That's normal.
What about the dumpsters that he contracted with? Is paid out of general, state thing?
No, that, that is.
It paid out of mine?
That was out of emergency.
Well, it's supposed to be paid out of my, my deal, and then ARCA funds we're gonna pay, or not ARCA, FEMA. FEMA funds we're gonna reimburse. And if it was, then it needs to be.
It's not.
Okay. So.
We have other dumpsters.
And this.
I paid $9,000 for those dumpsters, and then FEMA was hoping to pay me back.
And this is a road and bridge issue in Precinct One, so.
The reason it's brought before the court is the fact that this is a contract, and it's going to exceed $25,000 estimated to exceed that is why it has to be brought to court. If it was a smaller amount, it could be done otherwise.
It may end up being less, but we're anticipating it may not, and so. And this is the beginning effort, and so it could get, in theory, more expensive depending on that permit process, whoever needs to be involved. But we're making sure that the, that the engineers, part of their plan is covering any kind of outside permitting.
Will the, this is, this is the engineering plan that we're discussing right now. Will the work be done by Precinct One?
Once we get the plan, that is then submitted to TCEQ for approval.
Right now, we're just working, we're doing the contract.
Yes.
For Velvet and Weeks.
Velvet and Weeks, correct.
If that gets approved by the court, then we would submit that TCEQ compliance for remediation efforts. If they then so approve, then we would go forward with going forward with that engineering plan.
And like you said, most of those engineering plans usually are paid for out of the precinct that gets it, whoever done it, so.
Anything outside of the subdivision work that is, that is general is picked up by the precincts for that precinct-driven work.
So that, that's what I was thinking. This is just the contract, not the work.
Right. Any further discussion? Anything further, Mr. Strong?
Nothing further, Judge.
Commissioner?
Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no further discussion, entertain a motion with Commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'd like to make that motion with Commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the task order with Velvet and Weeks Engineering for topo and site plan for Trinity River slope repair with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Item number eight, consider and take action on matters related to lease agreement of the Kenny City Boat Ramp. And we've got our county attorney with us, Mr. Davis, to kind of lead us through this path.
Yes. Good morning, Court. We have received a request from Cadiz Capital, Inc. Cadiz Capital, Inc. is owned by Don McNamara. It's a Don McNamara company for reimbursement for the payment of property taxes on our Kenny City Boat Ramp. And we have a lease agreement that we renewed in 2010. We've had the lease agreement on that ramp since 1996. In 2010, we renewed it, and under the terms of that lease, it says that we shall reimburse the owner of the boat ramp for the payment of property taxes. And so they've submitted, they've never done that, so. And so they've submitted, they've never done that, so it's kind of an invoice that's covering a 14-year span, which is why we put it on the court, to allow the court to address it, discuss it, talk about it if you had questions, because the total dollar amount is $28,345.94. But that is property taxes paid on that property over 14 years. The reason they told me that, that they had never done it is it was an oversight on their part, that they had some sort of audit come in and they were looking at it and found, hey, you know, under our lease, the county should be paying those, we've never submitted it. When I look at it, one thing that I notice is, in 2010, that property was valued at about $19,000 and they were paying, you know, little under $400 a year in property taxes. Today, that property's valued at 619,000 and their, their annual tax bill was $10,000, little over $10,000. So, again, Clint's supposition is, the reason it got noticed is, it's grown so much, he probably was paying it all those years. And of that, that $28,000 total, about 24 or five of that is, is the first 10 years, or I'm sorry, the last four years and then everything, the $4,000 was the 10 years before. So, but under our lease agreement, it does say that, that we shall pay the property taxes, which, which makes sense. It's being used as a public boat ramp that we support, we provide all the maintenance on it. And, and that's why they would ask that these property taxes be paid.
Questions, Court?
Is that something you think we should discuss with the appraisal district, you know, because we're not charging people to boat dock their boats. Is this something, I mean, taxes are $10,000 a year now, is that something we want to take on so we can have a public boat ramp, $10,000 a year plus all the maintenance? Or will they look at it and say, the county is not charging people to dock their boats? And I know that's the only boat dock on this end of the lake that, that's public, isn't it?
Right. Yes, it is. Only southernly, understand?
I think it would be, it's a great piece of property for the county to have, to allow people to access the lake publicly, but we're not charging anything for them to access it. And then they want to pay $10,000 in taxes, really for, to us, the property's not worth much.
It's, and it's inter, and again, I don't know the, the works of the appraisal district, but it remained valued at $19,680,000 from 2010 until 2020. 2021, it jumps from 19,000 to 196,750. 22, it jumped to 548,550. 23, to 619,718. That's significant jumps in the last three years. And yes, I, I think that, one of the issues, of course, is they're, they're invoicing the company and the company's paying that. I did have Peggy confirm that all of these payments were made on this account and the account is up to date. You know, had we been the recipient of that bill, we probably would have reached out to the appraisal district and tried to do what everyone else would do if, if their property appreciated in that manner and that's protest these taxes. And so that may be something we could look at next year, is making the argument that, yes, if this were a waterfront lot, that, you know, was operating a commercial business, it might be worth that. But, but operating as a free public boat ramp, the value is certainly not what it is. The value may not be $19,000, maybe more than that, but, but the number's probably somewhere in between, honestly, and that's something we could look at.
Also, I've done some research on this and they did not have the CAD, the appraisal district didn't have the boat ramp, uh, it on the map as who owned it. It looked like it was just Plumter, Terrant Regional, like all the other waterfront. So, I am the one that takes care of the boat ramp and I'm, I'm in favor of staying, keeping it and it's the only place people can go that's very, and, and a lot of people go there.
Do you do the parking lot?
Yes, we do the parking lot and the boat ramp. We keep up the docks and we mow it every week and we need it, keep the signs up and pick up the trash. My guys go out and do that about once every week or two.
Well, I think it's a benefit to the county, especially the section that uses to get on the lake. But I think we need to talk to the appraisal district.
I've started that process.
Let them know what we're using it for, that it's not a waterfront lot, you know, somebody's gonna build a $3, $4 million high phone.
That's also something else the appraisal district has on their paperwork. It shows that somebody built a garage on it in 2020 and that's the time the taxes went up, the value went up, and that's a mistake. So, I talked to Haley yesterday and she said that was a mistake from somebody in Brownsborough, messed it up back in 2020. Brownsborough Lake, like, got a garage on it and they put it on the Caney City one. So that's one of the reasons the property taxes went up, I'm sure, is there's nothing been built on there.
You know, I think that there ought to be some kind of exemption in there if it's, if, if the land is leased to, to an entity that is using it for public use, for everybody to use it for public use. It's kind of like, we used to have a, when I think when the hospital was a nonprofit, you know, the hospital was built on our land and I don't think we charged tax to the hospital. All that's changed now since it's for profit, but I don't know if there's some kind of clause in there that if it's donated or leased to the, to an entity like that for public use, I would think that we'd get some kind of exemption, you know, not having tax on it at all, which I know that cuts the schools and all the other entities out too, you know, not just the county, but...
Well, it's, uh, and, and I follow your logic and your reasoning. It's, it's probably a good time to remind the public, as I do every day on phone calls with people calling me complaining about their taxes, is, is, you know, we have limited ability to control the Henderson County Appraisal District. And so many people believe that they're a county agency, that we can, we can make that decision, but that's an argument that we would actually have to take to the appraisal district, make those arguments and see if we could get them to, to agree or not agree.
I know everybody'd be wanting to donate their land to the county if they wasn't using so they could get taxes exempt on it, but we have to get, it had to be where we're in an agreement on it and sign a contract and yes, it is for public use.
Yeah. This lease agreement is very similar to our current agreement with the hospital. In our current lease agreements with them, their taxes that are paid are reimbursed to them on that. So this is really a very similar situation and it actually even predates the hospital.
And, and I, and I don't know from the audit standpoint or the county judge's standpoint, if we, you know, legally, we probably do not need specific action today, but I think we put it on the agenda just so the court can discuss it. So the audit would have some direction as to whether or not to just include it in the bills and we wanted it as a separate discussion item versus just putting into the bills and not, nobody knowing, you know, what it was about. So, again, I think that's the court's preference. We could either take a specific action to approve the payment of that amount, or if there seems to be a consensus, and now that we've discussed it, then, then it could just go into next week's bill payment and be paid with, without specific court action. Emery, are you good with everything on that part?
Yeah.
Is there any, anything in there that they're not gonna renew the lease if, if we don't do the refund?
Um, we didn't discuss, I did speak with, of course, I, I'm dealing with a law firm out of Dallas that, that represents, and I did talk to them and make sure that there weren't any issues with it. Was this something that maybe Mr. McNamara or Cadiz Capital was looking at getting out of the lease? And, and the answer I got to that is they have no indication of any of that, no indication that there's a problem, no indication that they don't want to continue it being used as a, as a public boat ramp or, or anything like that. They're happy with the arrangement. I don't know what would happen if the, the court were to deny it. I'm sure that would sour the relationship pretty quick, but, but no indications other than that if we, if we're, you know, we're gonna pay it, that there's any issues there with them terminating this agreement. The, the lease agreement, even though we did it, again, originally in 96, renewed when the property changed hands in 2010. It is on a year-to-year and so the termination on that, either party could terminate it with 90 days' notice. So, you know, it would be September-ish that, that either party would come up and, and send the other party 90 days' notice of termination for the following year. But, but again, no discussion of that in my talks with them.
Court, being on the court when we approved this, Commissioner Hall was the one that championed having this done. At the time that we did it, the lake was down and all of the public access boat ramps were going away more so. And I personally, I remember the agreement we went through this, is that we would. It was, it was a known, we'll send your money back. And as the county attorney stated, nobody really thought of it until it got up into these larger amounts. And I believe it stands true to our agreement. We should, we should honor it and honor it for the full thing. But continue this discussion with the appraisal district moving forward.
So, don't, don't go, we just pay it back right now? Do you think it needs to go through official protest with the appraisal district for the value of the property?
Not really, because it's a, we agreed, and this even predates McNamara owning it when Caney City actually owned it, our original, our agreement in 96 was with the, with the city or...
It's, it's, I forget who, it changed hands about three times.
Right.
Uh, it's been through a couple of different entities. At one time, there was actually a family that owned it, it was actually in a trust or an estate and, and again, somehow Cadiz Capital ended up with it at the end, but it has changed, the property has changed two or three times.
Yeah. So...
Which, I mean, we agreed to pay it. We have the agreement right here.
Yes.
It says we agreed to pay it. Over 14 years, $2,000 a year is not that bad. It's just from here on, we need to see if we can get it back down to that $400 or whatever it was.
And honestly, from a drafting standpoint, you know, I look back at it now in 2010, we could have done a better job drafting it. And again, I'll take responsibility for that. On the hospital lease, you know, what we did is we put a timeframe on the hospitals that said, you must submit your, your request for reimbursement. So I guess we, we've learned a lot, you know, in, in 14 years of doing this. It probably would have been better had we put that in this agreement, that, that, you know, they have to make requests for reimbursement within, you know, three months of the, the tax statement being due and we wouldn't be in this situation. But we didn't. And, and it's open-ended. It just says that we shall, we should reimburse them when, when submitted.
The conversation and the action, as you suggest, needs to take place now that we've been made aware of it, but through the agreement, I feel we are obligated to honor it.
So, we could pay it back and then if they do a protest and they, and they go back so many years on, then the refund would come back to the county instead of...
Not...
If they did reduce it, I don't know how many years you go back, all that's different on different rules, so...
In the, in this particular situation, they paid the money in, they got the money out, you know, if we get it back. It's, it's almost a zero sum because through the agreement, they were never oblig, or they are obligated, but the responsibility was on us to make them hold. So, it's, it's an oversight on all parts and moving forward, we'll definitely work with them about that because even if they do cut it by 70%, we still are obligated to give that 30% that they would owe them back, so. It's up to the court if you wish to take action today or we can't.
Does the guy that owns it right now, is he the, where's McNamara?
It's, the, the title name is Cadiz Capital, Inc. So it is a separate corporation and, and that corporation would be the actual owner. But in full disclosure, I will tell you, Cadiz Capital, Inc. is a Don McNamara property. And again, I don't know if he owns 100% interest in it, some other portion of the interest, but it is a, a Mr. McNamara property that, that owns that.
I think we should take action on it.
Which, and the only reason that's significant is obviously he owns Longco Development, which is right across the water from this, this property and has been a pretty good neighbor for the county on things when, when, when we've worked with him on that development. He, he's been good to us.
And the, the bridge expansion at Caney City came into play at this.
Oh, I agree.
Because he actually procured this portion of the property to assist in the state getting the second bridge, having room for it there. And what remains is the residual of that tract and that, if it had not been for us stepping in, they were going to do away with it because a portion of that is where the bridge is sitting now.
But when you look on the appraisal district, it doesn't even show that that's a property.
That's correct. That's correct. That's correct. The commissioner...
That's what I said.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't think we want, and I've got a public boat ramp too. Do you have one? Uh, we do, but it's going away.
Okay. I mean, I've got one. I, I don't think we, this is something we really want.
Not under the county.
Oh, I'm sorry, not underneath the county, but there is a public boat ramp that is not being charged, but it will be going away. The county does not have it.
One in my precinct's done by Upper Nature.
Yeah, it's Upper Nature. And the one in ours is a long-term lease from Tex Dod and Upper Nature. And, uh, but that one's fixing to beat the close down and start charging, these public boat ramps are getting harder and harder to find. I don't think it's something we want to, you know, give up. So, I mean, I think we should take action today and either, you know, hire the court vote.
Or do we need to, do you think it'd be good to rewrite the contract and put the terms in there and stuff on it, change them, or you think it's, do we approve it?
I'm not sure if we do that, we're not gonna ever need it signed.
I think that's something we could look at, but I would first like to see if we can have some success discussing this with the appraisal district and seeing what, what they would do.
Any further discussion?
Because we do, we hit the, we hit the insurance and everything, like insurance and stuff on it.
And, and, and they are, we have, we have the list of boat ramps in our entrance.
We have two listed.
Two listed. Any further comments? Entertain a motion on this item.
I'd like to approve matters related to the lease agreement for the Caney City Boat Ramp located in Precinct One.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spidey, second by Commissioner Tully, to approve the request, and I'm, I'm playing with this because I'm, I'm concerned about matters related to, it probably needs to be a little more specific than that. I'll ask our county attorney, you want?
I, I, I think it is fine, like I said, if the court wants to take action, because I don't really think, from your legal standpoint, I don't think action is required. Again, when we pay bills, we don't have a stamp on it. It could be paid in the bills at any future. Again, I think we put it all here just so we can have the discussion that we had. So, but I, I think the agenda language is fine.
Okay. Ms. Mump, you agree with that and the ability to, okay. Sorry for that deviation from norm, but we have motion by Commissioner Spidey, second by Commissioner Tully, to approve the request in matters related to the lease agreement of the Caney City Boat Ramp as presented. Any further discussion?
I will say that, Court, if, if this does pass, that this, this boat ramp brings in so many, or so much tax dollars and everything, it hosts a lot of tournaments and weekend fishermen that come down through here to fish Cedar Creek Lake as one of the top 10 bass lakes. So, it's a, it's a great avenue for us in, on our western part of the county. So, there's a lot of, a lot of traffic that comes through here on a Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And I think there's about four or five different outfitters that, that fish out of, fish out of this boat ramp. So there's a lot of people. Thanks, Judge.
Mm-hmm. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. I do want to take a quick moment. We had individuals here with Care For America, if you would, we'd like to get a picture with them. I know Mr. Pate left, is there, I don't know if they're still available.
I'm probably the only one available.
Well, please.
I don't have the pictures, I didn't, I wish you was here still.
Yes, ma'am.
I could text you to tell you to come back.
Well, I believe I had someone catching and they said they had to go. I didn't know if someone was staying. I wish I'd have known.
Jennifer had to leave and I think she had another appointment.
Yeah, I apologize. I wish we'd have known ahead of time that they were rushed.
We should have stayed just another day.
Okay. All right, then, we'll move to item, item nine, which is receive financial reports when we have none today. Item, you've got them? Okay. Now we've got, there they come. All right, let's get a picture right quick. Jody's is, good gracious.
We got a camera.
Somebody with a camera, thank you. Please, Mr. Pate, come forward. Where's the resolution? There it is.
Got it, please.
Please, if you would, members of Care For, come on up, they're part of the organization. Come on up.
I'm just.
All right. Item number 10 is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet. We have none of those today. Item 11 is consider and take action on submitted contracts. There are none. Item number 12 is consider and take action on requests for right-of-way permits. Commissioner Spivey?
Yes, Court, this is one of many coming from Brock's B. This is Brock's B for 13,559 feet of aerial footage and 1,906 feet of underground footage of county roads 1412, 1703, 1704, 1708, 1709, 1710, and 1712.
Questions for the commissioner? I will say this is the beginning of the, the ARPA project.
I don't know if this is, but I'm assuming. I've got a whole lot of other ones coming in too, probably for the week, next week and the week after.
In our last discussion, they were supposedly beginning, the plan was on the west side, moving east, believe they said, around the lake and the Chandler area, had two different organizations or companies working, so.
Some of it will probably be involved with their planned build that they already had, and then ARPA money that was going to push them on out into the rural areas.
Any other discussion? Entertained a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the utility line activity with Brock's B of Arkansas LLC to place 1350, 13,559 feet of aerial line and 1,906 feet of underground line on the aforementioned roads with the commissioner's authorization assigned.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Thule to approve the right-of-way agreement with the Bright Speed of Arkansas LLC for fiber optic installation along the aforementioned county roads with the commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McCam?
I have one from Atmos Energy Corporation for widening a temporary driveway on County Road 3519. They're going to put a 60-foot, they're going to widen the driveway entrance 60-foot at a 30-foot locate.
Court, questions? Entertained a motion?
I move to approve the notice of proposed utility line activity for Atmos Energy Corporation for widening a temporary driveway at 30, on County Road 3519.
Authorization.
Commissioner's authorization to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the right-of-way agreement with Atmos Energy Corporation for widening of temporary driveway on County Road 3519 with the commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Item 13 is consider and take action on submitted budget amendments, of which we have none. And item 14 is consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, sir, we have two seconds today. Our first set is fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $562,014.17.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
No question, just a comment. On page one, does it declare disaster precinct two debris coming out of general funds? I just wanted to point that out, because I thought I saw it in there. But other than that, no question.
On page one?
Yes, sir. Like to set thing down.
Yes, because I understood it was to pick up the debris from the storm, so we put it into credit disaster.
It's just what we were talking about. It was just what we were talking about earlier, and it's why I brought it up.
Okay, yeah, that's part of the theme of reimbursement.
I know, but y'all said it was coming out of here.
Yeah, yeah. I was thinking about that, but yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
But it's not a general fund bill. It will be reimbursed.
I just wanted to say I wasn't crazy, because I thought I saw it in there.
No, you're not crazy.
Any further questions?
No, sir.
Commissioner Thule?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertained a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of $562,014.17 as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the bills in the amount of $562,014.17 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Item 15, consider and take action on submitted plats.
We have one more bill.
Oh, there is another bill. Excuse me, a very important bill. Ms. Mump?
Yeah, this is just for the purchase of the new electrician facility. I'd like to have this closed.
The amount is how much? Mr. A, does that squares up with our, our documentation and agreement?
That does, that does. We originally put down $10,000 in earnest money, and then, of course, there were some prorated amounts that actually came back to us because of the fact that we don't pay property taxes. Roughly $500 came in, and so that's, that's how we got to the, maybe eight figure.
Okay. Further questions?
Do we have access to this building after this?
Yes.
Once we close, once we close, assuming the court approves this payment today, the judge will sign, probably tomorrow or Thursday, and then, once they close, we'll, we'll get access to.
What's that amount again? Okay.
I'll wait the motion to pay the bill.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Thule to approve the bill for the come-and-take-it building at $188,225.17 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Now, item 15, consider and take action on submitted plats.
I have two in precincts, one in three in precincts, four in all three.
Commissioner Spivey?
Yes, Court, I have a replat, or actually, this one's a subdivision of Phase Two, the Willow Bend, creating five lots. It'll be lots eight through 12 in the backup. You'll have, we have the will serve letters for electricity and water. It's provided in a historical letter, it's provided also in the paperwork from the development office. This is a second phase of one we passed earlier in the year.
Okay.
Hearing none. Hearing none, I'd like to make the motion to approve the final plat of Willow Bend, Phase Two, creating lots eight through 12, located at precinct one for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the final plat of Willow Bend, Phase Two, creating lots eight through 12 as presented for filing purposes only. Any further, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Commissioner?
Yes, Court, this replat is taking one lot to create two. The mother is gifting her son an acre of the property. It is in a private subdivision, private road. All the stuff's in the backup.
Questions for the commissioner? Entertained a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the final replat of Lot 48, creating Lot 48A and 48B in Spring Valley Acres, located in precinct one for filing purposes only.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Thule to approve the final replat in Spring Valley Acres, creating lots 48A and 48B for filing purposes only. Any further comments? All those in favor. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, sir, we'll start with a replat here. We got a replat of a lot in a Bonham subdivision. They want to replat, take out a one acre out of their five-acre tract, and they want to keep their one acre, and they, they're going to sell the rest of their lot there, so they're, they're doing a replat here to do a divisional end.
Questions for the commissioner? Entertained a motion?
I'd like to make a motion on the final replat of Lot 49 of Bonham subdivision, creating lots 49-R1 and 49-R2 for filing purposes only.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the final replat for Lot 49 of the Bonham subdivision, creating lots 49-R1 and 49-R2 for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Commissioner?
Yes, Court, this one here, we'd had in court for approval back on June 18th, and we did not finalize it. They requested that there was one variance that they needed for ingress egress, and also a bond covering the performance and construction bond that was needed for the subdivision. They've come through, they've got their, their variance that they've applied for, and they've also got their, their bond, their performance bond and construction bond that has been turned into the judge's office, and everything looks good. Mr. Strawn from the county attorney's office would like to speak on anything other than the bonds and stuff that we had issued to us.
Good morning, Court. As Commissioner Richardson said, this was initially disapproved back in June based on that variance, which has been since submitted to the court for today, as well as a construction bond and a maintenance bond. So the way our current subdivision regulations work is to release any construction bond, a maintenance bond is required. And they can either do that preemptively, like Mr. Follingham is doing today, or they can come back to the court. Either way, there will have to be subsequent court action upon that release of the construction into maintenance. And Mr. Follingham is taking care of both of those bonds today. He's using Lexington National Insurance, which is listed on the U.S. Department of Treasury website as a certified surety for financial securities for these type of bonds for roads and construction. They are licensed to do business in Texas, and they have enough assets to cover this bond. The construction bond is rated at 120% at $750,000, and it's to expire 12 months or sooner from today's approval, if so approved. So it would begin today, and that would be for 12 months, and they can actually get it done earlier than that. If they finish construction, they can submit that release to the court and then get it converted into the maintenance bond. The maintenance bond is the same company, and that's going to be covered for 40%, so $300,000, and that is going to be covered for 24 months. And that one doesn't have a sooner release, it's a minimum of 24 months. At the end of that 24, the developer must reach out in writing to the commissioner, get the county engineer involved, and make sure that we can release that maintenance bond. There was another issue that came up after the disapproval, and we're only here on these two issues, but this is kind of a side issue, is that Tex dot got involved. Grace Haven is not adjoining U.S. or Highway 175, but it may be in close proximity, and so that would be a state issue. Our local county ordinance cannot preempt or supersede any state law or federal law, so Tex dot may require a permit in this situation. That is not part of our requirement, so we don't have to think about that for our approval, and that wouldn't be part of our approval today. But the county is not accepting liability should Follingham's development company not seek out that permit through Tex dot. That's something they would have to do on their own, so.
I'm looking at several variances in the file. I was under the impression we were doing just one, but there seems to be several of them.
Yeah, the, the other variances that we, you know, we, we stood on, on the back of Jim.
Those were.
Everything, and we was good with everything, and then when I gave the disapproval letter, it was only on the two subjects. So I was thinking when we come back to court, that the two subjects that we wrote the disapproval letter on is basically all we really studied on, or we would have had to list several of them.
That's correct.
Right. Okay. Further questions?
So the document we had in front of us?
This is a different sub, that's a different subdivision, it's not on the backup. The other one's on, this one's on the backup.
Mr. Follingham's here as well, if the court had any questions.
Further questions?
He did send me a letter right before court about the Tex dot deal, and I haven't had a chance to read it. It was right before court, and.
So if the court so approves today on these two issues, we are not superseding any state law, any permit would be required between him and the state.
Court, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, entertained a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for the final plat approval of Grace Haven subdivision for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the final plat for Grace Haven subdivision for filing purposes only. Further discussion? All those in favor. Passes unanimously. Commissioner?
Yes, Court, this one here is another subdivision that's out on Lake Palestine. The name of it is Lake Towns, it's Lake Palestine subdivision. We gave a disapproval letter to them on July the 13th, and it's the same situation as the previous subdivision on the bond. They didn't have their bond in place for us to approve the, approve it in court. Everything else looked like it was ready to go, except for the bonding and stuff, and since then, they have turned in their bonds, and they've done theirs on a little bit of a different way, and I would like to get the county attorney's office, Mr. Strawn, to explain the bonds on, on this subdivision.
Thank you, Commissioner. As you stated, this was disapproved back in July for the one stated reason of having insufficient financial securities. There was actually a bond, a construction bond presented for 1.7 on that date, but it didn't cover the entire project, so it was insufficient in totality. That bond has been kept, and since that date, the probable costs have actually been lowered by approximately 1.1 million for the total project. It's quite significant. The county engineer did look at that and said that that could be within the reasonable range of, I guess, agreement, disagreement, but that, he believed that that could be reasonable. And so if we're looking at that similar or same $1.7 million construction bond, it would actually be a little bit over insured. So it would be over the 120% amount at 1.7 million. That construction bond will cover storm drainage and utilities. They're using insurers and DMT, and they are listed on the Department of Treasury, can do business in Texas, and have the amount sufficient for 1.7 million. However, there is no expiration date. However, there is no expiration date in this construction bond, so the court will need to do that today. Typically, that's about 12 months. I'll talk about the letter of credit and that actually has a date, so maybe we can make them the same date or we can make it a year from today. So this company has also, or these developers have also submitted an irrevocable standby letter of credit from Cattelman's Bank where the draft writers would be the county off of that amount. It's for 1.7 million, which is 120%, which would cover a road. So this is going to be separate than what the court looked at before and this is what was missing before. And so this does cover their new probable cost at 120% for road. Cattelman's Bank is FDIC regulated. They have tier one assets in the proper amount, actually quite a bit over that amount. I think our regulation says six or seven percent. They're at about 10 and a half percent on their tier one assets and their total assets are well above 1.7 million, so Cattelman should be good for that amount. And that expiration date has actually already started, the way it was written with the developers. And so that expires September 9th of 2025. So they have a little bit less than a year to get that road covered. And so we do need to make sure that we've then set a date on that construction bond. It can also be September 9th, 2025, or it can be September 17th of 2025, if we want to give them a full 12 months. They did not cement their maintenance bonds. However, the way our current regulations are written, they can come back to do that upon the release of the construction bonds and the developers have acknowledged that they will do that process. They know the process, they understand the process and they'll abide by it. Yeah.
Court, questions?
And one of the other deals was, is on the bonds, the previous bond, it was made out to Henderson County and I think the rules show that it's supposed to be made out to the county judge or his successor, so we've got all that changed from there also.
I believe they submitted an addendum rider for that.
So they have an irrevocable, irrevocable standby letter for 1.7 million and they also have a bond for 1.7 million?
Correct. And that should come up to 3.4. Their probable cost, the new allocation is 2.6 and so their 120% of 2.6 is 3.1 million. They're at 3.4, so they're actually over insured by 300,000.
Further questions?
And Mr. Denninghoff is here as well, if the court needs to speak to him.
Yeah, the, trying to find the flat.
I did reenter it in there. It's like I say, we'd had it on court previously on there and looked at all the stuff and went over it and I gave the deficiency letter. We'd all agreed on the deficiency was, was the bond, the bond issue was the only question that we'd had on there previously.
Yeah, but it has 22 variances.
Yes, and we went over all those and stuff before.
The only thing before the court today is the.
Nearly all of them were, except for the ones, a couple.
Most of the variances were in.
Like the woods.
They were in the cul-de-sac and they, they've agreed that their engineering on the cul-de-sacs on those variances, that it's going to be curb and gutter cul-de-sacs instead of ditches and stuff on those variances around the cul-de-sac. We had that issue with another subdivision that we didn't approve that were going to have like 25-foot entrances and they didn't want to put in curb and gutter and was going to be culvert driveways and we didn't, we went good for it on that.
What is our subdivision standards saying? They said that with these variances, curb and gutter, we're good to go?
Well, that's what we picked on that, decided that we would do that if they're curb and gutter. That way you don't have ditches around the cul-de-sac trying to drain water, you know, between, you wouldn't have but a foot between two driveways if you done it that way on some of them. But these, they're a lot little wider than 25-foot, like some of them we've had in the previous discussion.
They are and that issue was already approved by the court, so we're just here on that insufficient bond, only that half bond that was missing.
There wasn't nothing approved on that 7/30?
Well, it wasn't disapproved and so it's been accepted. And so we're here just on that disapproval.
We, on 7/30, we approved the plat?
We didn't approve anything, but we all agreed on what we were disapproving on by not passing the plat.
In more than 30 days.
And what is presented to us under our subdivisions is the final plat for Lake Towns, which is a approval of everything, the way, the way that we have it presented here today. You are correct. It was, there was no official approval given weeks ago, but there was consensus amongst the court of what the deficiencies were.
Correct, and so that was a written disapproval under 232 and so the court is restricted to that topic.
And they have refilled and have corrected the deficiencies.
That's correct, so they've submitted their response.
If they refile, we have 15 days to bring it to court for approval and if not, it automatically approves.
So anytime from now on, that if we, if a commissioner doesn't like something that's in the plat, they need to state their case that day?
Yeah, and get it in writing for the developer.
And tell the commissioner that has the plat?
Yes.
And that's what we've been doing somewhat in practice.
This is all due to us.
Yeah, we're back that far.
Mainly it was just the width of the frontage on the lots and on those lake additions we've gave. Nearly ever, nearly ever addition on lake has had variances on those lake frontage lots, especially on cul-de-sacs.
And you're stretching my memory too, but I believe Ms. Kimbrough, last time we were here, spoke on that, I think, is that right? I remember you standing up here talking about variances.
Any further discussion or comments on Lake Towns? Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a final plat of Lake Towns, Lake Palestine subdivision for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the final plat for Lake Towns on Lake Palestine for filing purposes only. All those in favor of the motion? Passes unanimously. Commissioner, I think you still have one more?
No, I've got them all. I done that one first.
Got that one first and there's the other one, okay. Then, item 16, open and consider bids, of which we have none. And item 17 is consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll say.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, second by Commissioner Richardson. Please wait, please, please. To adjourn at 10:16. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Now, have a party.